Good afternoon and welcome to North Las Vegas City Council. We welcome you to our city council meeting this evening, this afternoon, pardon me. There are two public forums set aside for public comment, one at the beginning of the meeting and one at the end. If you wish to speak, please complete one of the blue cards located at the table outside the main entrance or the podium rail to my left. Please give the card to the city clerk. She sits right here, Ms. Jackie sits right there. She'll make sure that gets to the podium here. When I call upon you to speak, I ask that you limit your comments to more than three minutes and that we avoid repetition. Madam City Clerk, are we in compliance with the Nevada Open Meeting Law?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we are.
Thank you. Tonight, we have the opportunity to have the invocation given by Elder Arthur Ivy from the Kingdom Family International Church. Following that, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance as led by Mayor Pro Tem Richard Churchill. Please rise.
Man, Father, we just thank you for this opportunity to come before your presence. And as we gather tonight, we pray over each and every soul that is here. Father, we ask that you would give our leaders, Father, the wisdom and the knowledge and understanding heart, how to lead and to guide, and that they will continue to walk upright in integrity. Father, we pray over each and every family that is gathered here. We pray for your protection over their husbands, their wives, their children, and we pray that your war and anger would walk up and down the hallway of our schools and our university, that everyone that is in this area will be protected and overshadowed by you. We thank you for your guiding and your leading, and as we pray over the agenda tonight, we pray that everything will go in decency and in order, and that you will get the glory. So we give you the praise at this time, and we just magnify you and glorify you, and thank you for our leadership and for your protection and for their service as they serve into the community. So we give you the praise and the glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please remain standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Elder Ivy, would you like to tell us a little bit about your church for a minute? We appreciate your blessing in our meeting tonight, and maybe somebody out there would be interested in coming to your congregation.
Amen. Praise God. Well, we are located, it's called Kingdom Family International, and we are located at 1229 West Orange. We've been there for over forty-something years. We are pastored by Senior Pastor Deontay C. Akerson and co-pastored by his wife, Seneca Akerson. And we welcome everyone that is, it's a place like a family, really, it's a family setting, and everyone is welcome at any time. You will find loves and arms open to welcome you. We are a non-denominational church, so everybody is welcome to come, and we appreciate if you would pay us a visit, and you'll see for yourself how great and awesome that the love of God will be shown through the people that are working there. So God bless y'all, and thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Elder. We appreciate you and let your church know how much we appreciate the goodness they bring to our community, too. Thank you. Tonight, we have a presentation for the business of the month, which will be led by Councilman Goines Brown, so we'll all go down to the front.
So I think it was the beginning of May, I just remember it was on a Sunday, I had the pleasure, along with Congressman Horstford and Nick Steele, and met with some owners of a unique business, and it's called the Gas Station Studios. I'm not sure if that's the official name, but that's what's on the building. And this studio specializes in music production for recording artists, musicians, film and TV, as well as artist development and branding. And so the goal of this business is to provide industry-level quality and professionalism at affordable rates. And I understand you were established in 2016, and it's just a safe place for entertainment production. And it's the first, yay, film studio of its kind in North Las Vegas. And so I chose this building, this business, simply because I want them to just share the progress that they went through to get started, and I know they were a recipient of some funding through our Small Business Connector. So Tyler and Tiana, please come on up. And I'm just going to read the certificate of recognition. It's presented to the Gas Station Studios for providing high-quality music for providing high-quality music and video production services through a state-of-the-art performing arts facility in North Las Vegas. Thank you for your contribution to our community, and we wish you continued success and growth. So congratulations. And this is Damian, sorry Damian, I forgot to introduce you. When we toured, he was sitting down a lot of the time, so I'm just in awe of the height here, so, sorry.
Okay. First, I would like to thank you guys for this honor and a chance to speak on behalf of the studio, and thank you for, yeah, please, thank you. Thank you for the Las Vegas Valley for supporting us and providing most of our clientele. This started out as a small do-it-yourself setup in my mother's bedroom, and it's grown to tremendous depths. Now we have a 3,500-square-foot facility with three recording studios, a podcast studio, a learning lab, which facilitates our nonprofit, is for artistic youth, and we also have a small event space in the back of the studio so that we can teach and do artist development for the same artists and the same children that we work with on a daily basis. So this wouldn't have happened without North Las Vegas, and it definitely wouldn't have happened without my team and my wife and supervisor here. So thank you again.
We're going to move on to council items. I'd like to explain for a minute that Councilmember Barone is not here. He's a teacher at Rancho High School and a very celebrated teacher there, very well-respected and loved. He is actually at the Rancho High School graduation this evening, speaking and calling out the names and giving the diplomas out, so he asked that he could be excused. So we're going to start with Mayor Pro Tem Churchill.
Thank you, Mayor. My gosh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Got seven items over here. I'm going to breeze right through them because I know a couple of my colleagues were at a couple of these as well, so they could elaborate on it when it gets to them. First, I just want to mention that I was invited to the first annual Vegas Chamber Military Affairs Committee, which they call MAC, down at the West Gate. And when they have those events, what they're doing is honoring the airmen from both Nellis and Creech for exceptional service to the country. And I really appreciate them doing that, of course, to honor these people, because they give not only their time, but in some cases, they give their life for us over here. So that was a great event, and again, like I said, this was the first one of annuals coming up. The second thing I want to mention, and Councilwoman Goines was there with me, as well as Republic Services. We had asked Public Works to put in a button-operated traffic crosswalk at the entrance and exit of Republic Services on Commerce just south of Cheyenne. It's a very dangerous area down there. There's a lot of traffic normally there when these employees come in and out, and they did that, as they always do. They did a great job, and we took some photos over there, so I want to thank our team over here for taking the time and doing that for those employees. And of course, Republic Services was very grateful. And I'd like to thank my friend Paul Di Pietro, who is with IATSE. He's a teamster, but he's not part of the 631 at Republic Services, but he also had a concern, so I want to thank Paul for bringing that to my attention as well. And I don't know who may have had an opportunity to go see the '90s tour with Vanilla Ice at the AMP on May 20th. I didn't know what Vanilla Ice was, except Vanilla Ice cream, I'm kind of out of it. But then I found out that Vanilla Ice is also on HGTV, so he's also a house flipper, so go figure. But that was an amazing show, even though it was a little too loud for me, but everybody enjoyed it, put on a good show, and I have to say thanks to our Parks Department and the team over there for putting that together. Everybody had a great time. The North Las Vegas PD BBQ at Valleyview, Councilwoman Goines Brown could probably elaborate on that. I was there with her and with Councilmember Barone and with the VIPS, volunteers in police service. They do great hamburgers. They do great hamburgers, I could tell you that, and they do great work in our community. So thank you to them and for the Fire Department for being there. This year was the first annual Battle of the Badges, and if you don't know what that is, they had it up at Aliante Casino. It was a competition between our Fire Department and our Police Department to find out just how much blood that they, that doesn't sound right, but how much blood can be donated in either one of their names. So when you went in there, they gave you a ticket, and after you gave your blood or prior to giving your blood, you would drop that ticket in either one of the two jars, FD or PD. So I'm not going to tell you which ones I put mine in, and my wife put it in which one, too, but we move them around. But I want to thank them and Red Cross for doing that, for our community. We're very low on blood, so thank you to our Fire Department and of course, our Police Department for getting involved in the city. Ice cream socials. Nobody could tell me that they don't like ice cream. So myself and Assemblywoman Thomas were up at Ruby Duncan, and of course, once again, when you see us over here, we're the face of the staff behind us. If it wasn't for Council liaison people, Rizel and Brianna, we wouldn't have been able to put that ice cream social on. The kids loved it. This was specifically for a couple of classes up there that were graduating, and they just loved those ice cream sandwiches, and so do we. So I want to thank the school for allowing us to do that, and for Councilwoman, I'm sorry, Assemblywoman Thomas for being part of that as well. Last but not least, I'll mention Ailacquid, the inauguration ribbon cutting for the third hydrogen facility at Apex. That was an amazing event up there. Clearly, clearly, hydrogen is going to be part of clean energy going forward. So we had the privilege of attending that, and we did more ribbon cutting up there. So that's part of our job, to walk around with scissors now to cut ribbons. So it's a good thing. North Las Vegas is growing in the right direction. So may I, I thank you for the opportunity to say this.
That's probably your favorite part of the job, too, isn't it? Creating jobs, I love it. Councilman Black.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. I also supported the Battle of the Badge with a blood donation. I had a little bit of a dilemma because I love and respect the Police Department and the Fire Department equally, so I borrowed a quarter from a stranger, flipped it, and sorry, PD, I gave my ticket to the Fire Department. So it didn't help, though, because they, didn't you lose? Yeah, so, sorry. I tried. Anyway, two great events are coming up this weekend in Ward III, awesome community events for families. The first one is at Fire Station 56, located on 3475 Elkhorn Drive. It's a beautiful fire station with some fantastic firefighters and paramedics that are opening their doors to the community from 8:00 to 11:00 for a pancake breakfast. I'll be there for that event. Please invite your friends, neighbors, come out, see the Fire Department, see the awesome equipment that they have, meet the great staff, and meet some of your neighbors. And then a little bit later that day, at the Silver Mesa Rec Center, there's a fantastic pool out behind the rec center, and it's a couple decades old, was due for renovation. We invested a great deal of dollars into renovating and making it nice and new, and we're having our grand reopening at Silver Mesa Rec Center Pool. It's free to the public in connection or partnership with Southern Nevada Health District Move Your Way program, a campaign to encourage activity and outdoor, outdoor activity and moving. And so that is from 3:00 PM to 7:00, and hope everyone can make it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Goines Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, we held both of our SNUMA graduations, very moving ceremonies for me, and just so proud of the progress that our kids have made. And then there was an article, it's called Liberatus Institute, which I've never heard of, it's about education empowerment, and the article was entitled, "What Do Elon Musk and the City of North Las Vegas Have in Common?" It's talking about microschools and just comparing his microschools, there's no comparison, ours was the best, with the microschool concept, and I think it was just a good article, and it just touched a little bit on just the mental stability when you have curriculums that are tailored to individual students. So again, I just want to thank everyone for all the work that was put to make SNUMA a success, and I'm just so proud of the outcome from our SNUMA Pumas and our microschool. Tomorrow, we are hosting with an invited guest list, a Small Business Connector mixer at our very own Fifth Street Brewery, and this is a brewery that's in North Las Vegas, and Amanda Payan is the owner and her brother, and they are the first Latina-owned brewery in the state of Nevada. And so we'll just have great conversations about small businesses and the Small Business Connector, and how that helped them to start and grow their businesses. And this Saturday, there's a park called the Historic West Side Legacy Park, and they will be honoring their second round of inductees for that park, and it's right there on the corner of Martin Luther King and Lake Mead, and there are quite a few North Las Vegas notables in the community that are going to be honored in the second round, and we have a large group of North Las Vegas notables that were already honored back in, I think it was the end of January in the first round, so this is the second round, it's going to be from 8:30 to 10:00 at that park. That's it.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the agenda now, we're going to go into the first public forum. This is time set aside to comment on post-agenda items, so if you want to speak on any items on the agenda today, now would be that time. I have some blue cards here. I have Tim Smith. Mr. Tim, are you here? This is concerning item number 12.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and members of the audience, those of you at home. I'm coming forward this evening to thank the City of North Las Vegas, the Council, Mayor's Office, and those that were involved in instituting back the Veterans Commission, Michael Kelly and that group, because now, you know, I've only lived here since 2018, but now we got a Veteran Service Center coming in. Those are a big thing. That's a very big thing. Many back east where I come from, back in Massachusetts, that's an integral part of a neighborhood. It's also an integral part of a city, because every city and town in Massachusetts has a Veteran Service Officer, as well as a Veteran Service Resource Center, and that's mandated by Public Law, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 1215. So to see North Las Vegas take the lead on this and build the very first one in Nevada, that's a big thing. And I'm very proud, and my wife, I'm very proud to be part of this community, to where these sort of things are going to happen. And again, I want to thank you folks for getting that committee started back up again. I want to thank my own counselor, Pam Goines Brown, because I also came back from traveling and found out that I was being appointed to the North Las Vegas City Charter Committee. And a charter committee is something else. It's very important to a community, because how a city functions and how it interacts with its citizenry is directly related to that charter. And how those citizens relate to that is the process. They give that committee the direction on how to help the council direct the city in the way it's mandated and how it's going to function. So for those two items, I want to thank you, you know, all, because this is going to be great things. And I'm glad to see Rich Chichero and Pam and many of the other counselors, I'm sorry, Isaac's not here this evening, but this is very important to our veterans' community, especially where it's so close to the hospital. This is going to be probably the one stop to where veterans can come. If they need resources, they can be there. In addition, if you needed to have a Nevada One Stop, they could probably even get a job there. There could be a resource there where they could speak to our counselor, and no things can happen. So these things are important, and I'm glad to be part of a community that's able to get these things done. So thank you again.
Before you leave, let me just add a comment, but it has nothing to do with your comment, but I just want people in the audience, and people who may have watched this on TV, realize I think North Las Vegas is the most patriotic city in the state of Nevada. We have 40,000 people who have something to do with Nellis Air Force Base or Creech Air Force Base, the dependents, spouses, enlisted, you know, ranked people. So we really see this as a huge benefit to our community, have these people in our community and have a resource that will support them. I want to give the city manager a little bit of a high five for this, because he designated where money goes and how services go for our community. So Ryan, once again, thank you for being at the very front end of helping the veterans out in our community. So thank you, Tim.
Yes, well, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Council, and everybody at home, we did it, we got a Veteran Center coming. It's good things. Great things.
Thank you, Tim. So we're going to move on to, we have an item 17, a group of people here. I'm just going off any order I see here. Ignacio G. Martinez, I hope that's, I'm saying this right, is that correct?
Spanish?
Welcome, sir.
Hola, mi nombre es Ignacio Martinez. Trabajé en Texas Station Casino por 22 años.
He said, "My name is Ignacio Martinez, and I've worked in Texas Station for 22 years."
Okay.
Y un día iba a mi trabajo y un supervisor me dijo que esperara, que ya no tirara trabajo, que nos iban a avisar cuando íbamos a regresar. So on my way to work, one of the supervisors told me that I have to wait, because we're not going to have a job right now, they're going to call us when they're ready. Y en vez de regresar, nos dieron una carta en la cual decía que estábamos despedidos. They didn't call back to us, just only hand them a letter when they say you are removed from the company. Y yo me sentí sumamente triste, deprimido. I was so sad and depressed. Porque sentí que mis 22 años nunca los valoraron. Because I believe those 22 years that I've been serving with them, they don't mean anything for them. Y siempre siento que di mi mejor esfuerzo para esa compañía. And I believe I do my best effort to this company. Y hasta después, he tratado de encontrar empleo, pero por ser mayor, nos dicen que nos van a dar trabajo, pero nunca he encontrado empleo hasta hoy. And after those years, I just put application, and I expected to call me, and I believe because of my age, I'm not able to get any job at all. Estoy triste porque somos muchos compañeros así como yo. And I'm so sad because many of the workers be like me. Y hasta ahorita, no tengo trabajo, estoy usando mi seguro social, y mi esposa no trabaja tampoco, y solo estoy viviendo del seguro social. And until today, I don't have a job, and I live with my wife, that she don't have a job, and I live only with the Social Security. Y es muy duro para mí, y a la vez triste saber que Texas Station está construyendo, I mean, los compañeros de Texas están construyendo un gran edificio en Durango y 215. And I'm so sad because Texas Station doesn't do anything for us, and I'd just be disappointed because they're building a big casino on Durango Station on 215. Y quisiera saber si ustedes podrían tendernos una mano y saber qué va a suceder. And I wonder now if you're able to do something for us, what will happen to us. Porque mi situación es muy difícil, y fuimos muchos compañeros que nos hicieron lo mismo. Aprovecharon la epidemia para dejarnos ir. Fue una tremenda excusa que dieron ellos. And I'm so sad because many of my workers be the same like that. They took, I mean, they took the opportunity about the pandemic to let us alone, and did nothing.
Thank you. So what we're going to do is we're going to hear from five different voices today, and then Council, if you have any questions, okay? So, pardon me. Oh, wait, oh, you guys, well, did you want to individually talk to every one of these people, or did you want to wait?
This is just public comment, Mayor, so they're allowed to speak.
Oh, they're right. I can't dialogue back and forth with you on this, so I appreciate that. When it gets to item number 17, we can, we'll speak, you know, to that issue, okay? So Ms. Didi, I'd like to do you well, Didi. Okay, welcome. Thank you. So once again, we'll hear what you say today, then we'll get to item 17, then we'll discuss what you've said, okay? Is that fair enough? Okay.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Didi Salvagio, and I worked for Texas Station as a cocktail waitress for 25 years. I opened and closed the property when the pandemic happened. I have three kids, and I depend on my job to support my family. I loved what I did for a living, and I definitely enjoyed working there. We had a lot of regulars and a lot of loyal customers. I was devastated, obviously, when the pandemic hit and they closed the property, and they did not reopen. I was even more devastated when we got a letter saying we were no longer employed for Station Casinos, and that there were no other options of getting hired at another property. I felt abandoned by a company that I gave 25 years of service to, and with hard work and dedication. I called NSIC honestly only once in 25 years, and I had an impeccable employment record. My job was like my second home. I enjoyed going in there and, like I said, interacting with all the customers. We had a very loyal following there. So it was devastating, you know, not knowing what I would do or where I would go, as I'm sure many people felt, you know, in all the casinos. But we definitely felt that, me and my coworkers, we felt that we were being treated unfairly because they were not, they didn't even consider us or offer us employment when the other properties opened. Granted, it might have been extra board or, you know, not full-time, but they just opened up, put it on Indeed, offered the jobs to the public, and didn't even call us and ask us, you know, hey, can, you know, we have other options at our properties, we're not opening still, but we don't know when it's going to be, could you please, you know, maybe come and, you know, apply, work for us at another property? A lot of us worked for that company for 15 years plus, and it just was really sad that they didn't give us an opportunity to return to their other properties. And honestly, it would kind of felt, it hurt a little bit, too, or a lot, actually, and a lot of us agreed. You know, they would advertise on TV that they're all about family, that's what their commercials are, locals, family, but we kind of felt like, well, if you're advertising that, why aren't you treating us, you know, your loyal, dedicated employees the same way? So I'm just asking if the City of North Las Vegas could, if they get their licenses extended, could you please push for the recall rights to be extended, so when and if they do open or if another company takes over, that we do have the opportunity to go back to our jobs, and, or that they would at least give us opportunity to work at some of their other, you know, properties when Durango Station opens or whatever? Because a lot of the coworkers, my coworkers, are actually holding out, you know, to get their jobs back. I had a lot of years and a lot of seniority. I was day one, so, but anyway, I just wanted to thank you for listening and hearing what I had to say, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Didi. Appreciate you coming today. Ronald Portillo?
Good afternoon, everyone. How are you? Well, my name is Ronald, and I worked for, at the buffet for two years at Fiesta Rancho. I was upset when Station Casino sent us a letter early during the pandemic, fighting us and saying that we're no longer their employers. I felt bad because my family depends on my job and my insurance. I worked so hard, was committed to my job, and I was happy to work every day with my coworkers because they were like family to me. I see many of my coworkers who worked for 25 years and 18 years. I see many of my coworkers who worked for 25 years and 18 years with Station Casinos, and we were struggling a lot since that, since they just sent us the letter terminating us. I wonder why the company didn't say it in our faces. I know where we were no longer Fiesta Ranch or Texas Station employees, but it felt bad to be laid off during the COVID-19 pandemic, and it was not right how they told us that we didn't have any job anymore. I went to job fairs and signed up for positions, but nothing happened. They didn't call us, even though they said they will call us. Like many of coworkers, I have been out of job for two years now. I have questions. I have some questions. What are Station Casinos' plans for North Las Vegas community? Why are they keeping these casino properties closed while building a brand-new casino at Durango? Can the city of North Las Vegas push us workers to get our jobs when Texas and Fiesta Ranch reopen? Thank you.
Thank you, Ronald. Appreciate you being here today. Moving forth, Ms. Rosa Haro?
Hi, hello. Mi nombre es Rosa Haro. Trabajé por 21 años allí en Texas Station porque cuando vino la epidemia esa, entonces empezaron a limpiar el casino todo, pero no nos dieron una explicación ni una punta para explicarnos qué iba a suceder. Entonces, cuando yo, cuando ya terminamos de limpiar todo, mi supervisor me dijo, oh, dijo, lo siento mucho, pero se van a tener que ir. Y también lo mismo que están diciendo mis compañeros, recibimos una carta donde nos decían, ustedes ya no son trabajadores de nosotros, no trabajan más con nosotros, y no son empleados de nosotros. Pero sucede que yo también estoy retirada, y con mi cheque de retiro, yo pago mi casa, la están pagando, pero esa es suerte mía, pero de muchos no es la suerte misma mía. Ellos perdieron su trabajo, perdieron dónde vivir, y están hasta en las calles. Pero lo que no me explico es que, porque no abren esos dos casinos desperdiciando el que no tenemos trabajo, y pueden sacarle más beneficio ustedes y nosotros también. Es una ayuda grande que nos darían a todos. Entonces, yo sí lo necesito porque lo mismo que están diciendo por nuestra edad, buscamos trabajo y no nos quieren dar en otro lado. Nomás dicen sí, pero nunca nos llaman. Los mismos casinos están agarrando gente, pero lo que ellos quieren es gente nueva, y ni siquiera tienen la, como digo, el tiempo que nosotros dimos nuestro esfuerzo allí. Entonces, lo que queremos saber cuando la epidemia esa vino fue un atraso para todos nosotros. Gracias. Y es muy triste.
She say, "My name is Rosa Haro. I've worked at Station Casinos for 21 years. My job means everything to me. I mean security, and I like my job." When the pandemic start, I remember the hotel was almost empty, which is a few workers cleaning. My supervisor come to us and send us home to wait for them to call us, to tell us when we will go back to work, but that never happened. I live in North Las Vegas, and I'm retired, and I own my house. One of my children live with me, but they isn't working. So, when the company send us a letter say that we are not longer employees, I was so sad and very depressed. I was very anxious because I need my paycheck to pay my bills, buy food, and support myself. I'm fortunate that I getting my social security. Currently, I able to pay my mortgage with the help of my other children's and my savings so I can survive. Other ways, I would like to live in the street like many of my coworkers who lost their home. I need my job back because my savings are running out. Station Casinos doesn't care about us because we are just numbers to them. They have a lot of money, so they don't care if they reopen the hotel or hire brand-new people for open position. Will we be offered what we are struggling? It's so far, it's not fair. So, some of us, we are older like me, and I worried that no one wants to give me a job because my age. Can the city hall in North Las Vegas push for us worker to get our job when Texas Station and Fiesta Rancho they reopen? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And Nicholas Polks? Oh, this is, this is item number five. Is Nicholas here? Hey, welcome.
Good afternoon, mayor and council members. Yes, this is with regards to item number five. The proposed changes will tie the 3% gross revenue fee to the fair market value as determined by the Department of Tax, the same way the Department of Tax charges the 15% wholesale cannabis excise tax. We have been opposed to the way the 15% excise tax has been calculated since it was imposed for numerous reasons. It is charging more than the 15% that the original legislation intended, which is wrong. We firmly believe that the fair market value is not being calculated correctly by the Department of Tax, as we have had an average actual tax rate of 22% for the intended 15% excise tax since it began in 2017, with some months as high as 37% actual tax rate. We believe they do not, well, we know they do not take the weighted average to get this fair market value. They take the highest price per pound sold, the lowest price per pound, and then they use the median. Where we believe they need to use a weighted average because most cannabis is sold at the lower costs, as that's what is in most demand. Excuse me. The fair market value only updates every six months and does not accurately reflect the actual current market value. The only reasonable and fair way to charge a tax that is intended to be a certain percentage is to base it off the actual sales numbers, the way that the 3% North Las Vegas fee is currently being charged. Another major issue you will find if the proposed amendments are approved is the difficulty in tracking and auditing this tax, as there are nine different fair market value categories that the Department of Tax determine, and they change every six months. This will result in significant additional labor for any audits you may perform on cannabis businesses. Also, the fundamentals of this tax favor the people who overcharge or who charge higher rates for cannabis, and it punishes those selling for reasonable and lower, more affordable rates. I have petitioned the Department of Tax 15% wholesale cannabis tax, the way it's been charged for years, and I found out that the only way to really change it is through legislation. Therefore, we are currently working to get that changed, to charge just simply the 15% of the actual tax. One additional thing is I believe there is legislation that limits cities to not charge more than 3% of their sales. So, if this does get approved, I think that might be an issue for you guys. I strongly urge the proposed amendments are not approved as they are today, or at least if you guys are able to amend it and just remove that, tying it to the fair market value. I'm here if you guys have any questions.
Thank you. We're aware of the situation. Mark Jordan's sitting right there. We had a talk with your president of your company the other day at State Issue, but just to let you know, we're aware of your situation.
Thank you so much, mayor. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on now to end the public forum and moving on to, moving on to the agenda.
Counsel, just to kind of give you a little information, Sire's our management system that we have, and it's the software program that, and it's set up for tonight's meeting to have both the city council and the RDA meeting. However, as you all know, the RDA meeting was canceled tonight, but unfortunately, Sire still thinks that it's still happening because that's a computer, and they just think differently than we do. But what it's doing is it's creating an issue you'll see on the display tonight where the agenda item numbers that are displayed on the screen, and the chambers are going to be different than what was on the published agenda. So, just for, for instance, the Sire's displaying the approval of today's city council meeting is agenda item number two, but in reality, it's item number one on the published agenda. So, throughout the meeting tonight, just to, just kind of a disclaimer, I guess, is I'll be referring to the numbers throughout the meeting that were on the published agenda, but that not are the numbers on the screen. So, I hope that doesn't create a lot, create a lot of confusion, but I just wanted to make sure that you knew that beforehand. So, item one, even though it says item two, item one on this evening's agenda is city council regular meeting agenda for June 1st, 2022, for possible action, and it's staff's recommended to approve.
Thank you. Moving on to this agenda, the chair will take a motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to the consent agenda.
The consent, the consent agenda consists of items numbers two through 15, and it's our recommendation to approve it. It's published.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments or questions on the consent agenda? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Nicholas, if you'll wait for a second and visit with Mark, that'd be good for you to be here, okay? On that thought that you had. Set for future hearing dates.
Item number 16, set date for any appeals filed or required public hearings.
There you go. Madam City Clerk, I'd direct you to set any hearing dates as necessary. Help us out. Moving on to business, item number 17 now.
Item number 17, resolution number 2694, resolution of the city council of the city of North Las Vegas, suspending certain code requirements for resort casino hotel privileged business license and privileged business license associated with resort casino hotel that have been granted extensions of non-operational status by the Nevada Gaming Control Board due to the continuing effects of the COVID-19 emergency and continuing economic uncertainty.
Thank you very much. Now, we had, so, do you have a main speaker, Didi, or somebody out there that maybe could come to the podium for a second? You can choose your leader. I just, I just want to give council a chance.
Okay.
To maybe, so, we've heard the concerns in both languages. We understand the issue that you're fighting for. You understand this is just an extension of it, not hiring anybody yet, I guess, there. But counsel, did you have any comments or questions you wanted to ask Ms. Didi?
Do we have anyone from Stations here? Not an employee, just.
No, no, somebody's representing the corporation.
Representing the corporation. That would, my questions would be directed to them, so they're not here, so.
Okay. Richard, counsel?
Thank you, mayor. Sometimes we, not we here, but people get a little jaded hearing all of these issues, particularly if, you know, you're in a position where you have a job and, you know, you're doing okay, you're not doing great, but you're doing okay, you have money coming in to feed your families and to cover your bills. Very difficult to really hear and, you know, kind of get close to the people's feelings when you hear something like this. It's pretty much devastating. Of course, as a city council, we don't have the authority to tell a local business what to do or who to hire, but no legal authority to that. But, you know, both of those casinos are in North Las Vegas, and of course, without them operating, it affects us over here as well, jobs for our people here, revenue for our city. I would think that at least, speaking for myself, it would make sense to rehire, reallocate your resources from one casino to another, particularly the ones that have institutional knowledge, that've been dedicating their lives for many, many years, as I've been hearing, to another, you know, casino somewhere else in the valley. Again, we can't tell a business owner to do that, but we would hope that Stations, Station Management would consider that, you know, just as a means of saying, you know, thank you for your service. Because I didn't hear anything here tonight that was really derogatory towards Stations. People were just speaking about their concerns and the devastation that they're going through at home without having a job. And I think we could all relate to that at one point in time in our lives. So, you know, I would hope, I was hoping that someone from Stations would be here tonight and give us the opportunity to speak with them as well. But absent that, you know, I'm sure they'll get the message, you know, we're televised, but, you know, I ask all of you to just, you know, hang in there and hope that you'll be able to get back to work and earn a living and take care of your family. So, I'm sorry that this is happening to you, though. Thank you, mayor.
If I may speak, one of the big things is that if they get their license, you know, extended the suspension or whatever of their license, the recall rights were passed, and they're supposed to end in August, I think, I believe it's the 22nd. So, part of our biggest thing would just be if they're getting their license to be able to be extended for, you know, period of non-active, would, could we please get our recall rights extended so, say, in a year that they open up, then six months, year, whatever, that we still have those recall rights in force, you know, so we could, would be able to return at least back to our jobs? Because I do understand you can't force them to hire other casinos, but the main thing is we would just really like to get our jobs back when and if they reopen. If they don't, then they don't. Or if they sell to another company, like the Palms was sold and they got, you know, they rehired all their day one, all the people that were there pre-COVID. So, they were able to come back and get their jobs back. So, I think that's one of the main things here is just maybe extending the recall rights so we still have that opportunity, at least to go back to our properties that were our homes.
I just think without them being here, and I know they will get this message, but we just don't know right now.
Okay.
So, I can't even give a suggestion without knowing what their plans are, whether they're going to open or not open.
Understand.
So, once we hear from them, I guess we can be in touch with you, just answer as to what are the future plans.
Okay.
That would be great for us to know as well.
Yeah, exactly.
So, I appreciate that.
I know that's a huge for you guys as too, you know, for them to be open and stuff. This was a great casino, so, but I appreciate it, and I thank you for your time and listening.
Counsel, my black.
I was just going to say, number one, how heart-wrenching it is to hear from two years to 25 years of individuals that have dedicated a tremendous amount of life energy to an organization to be in this situation. You know, clearly, the pandemic has been, turned a lot of people's lives upside down and really made us do things in a different manner throughout our community, and some of those have been very, very difficult. I was, I was just thinking, the city, we don't have the authority to intervene with the recall requirements. I think that's a state, a state matter. I don't know the mechanism personally, how that would be extended, but that would be where that authority lies, from my understanding. Also, I was just wondering, one of the gentlemen mentioned job fairs, and I was wondering if you happen to know, if anyone knows, how many of the Station workers from those two properties have been able to obtain other employment? I know there's a desire, you know, it's a personal decision, a desire to hold out for the job that you did for 25 years, and I totally respect and appreciate that. I was just curious if you knew, are the majority of the folks in your shoes that are on unemployment or trying to figure out how to make ends meet without employment, or do you know that?
There are some that definitely are. My circle, like, you know, the ones that I worked with at Texas, the bartenders and cocktail waitresses, some have moved on, just like Amazon, temporary jobs, you know, kind of holding out, hoping that they can go back to, you know, their former job at Texas Station. And Stations did hold job fairs, and a lot of us.
Oh, those were Stations job fairs? Okay, okay.
So, they held them, and honestly, I even went online and put my application in, and, you know, obviously, 25 years, they can see on the resume that I worked for them, I know all their core values, you know, I, and a lot of our customers actually from Texas either went to Santa Fe or Palace, so, you know, it would still be beneficial for them to hire someone who, we have customers that are calling us, when are they opening? When are you guys coming back? You know, or they'll see the ones that have been hired, you know, through the job fairs, because there have been some, you know, that have gotten hired, but they had to go through the job fair. And I think the hardest blow was like, you know, you, you know, you laid all of soft, I understand, you have every reason to not open your casino for whatever your reasons. are, I'm not the business person, but why didn't you call? They picked and chose and not by seniority of who they wanted to transfer to some of their other casinos. And there were some people like in security, there weren't a lot in beverage that I knew of, that they picked and chose, and they didn't go by a seniority list or anything like that. But there was a lot that were just, you know, not even like, okay, we're hiring extra board at Santa Fe Station. It was just like I said, the jobs were put on Indeed, they were put out there, instead of like, hey, let's, you know, call some of our laid-off employees and bring them back to work for us, you know? And we could choose to say no if we didn't want to work extra board or whatever, but at least give us the opportunity, you know, to stay with the company. So that was like a huge thing, too. So they did hire, hold job fairs, but they did not hire a lot of us back. Or people that I talked to, you know, 25 years, some people, you know, I understand that they have their vetters, that, you know what I mean, that their team that, you know, go through the applications, and I think some of us felt maybe it was age, too, you know, even though I know they can't discriminate, they're not supposed to, but we had a lot of good people that had a really big following. So it was, it was just really devastating, like, what? They're putting jobs out for everyone else, but why don't you call the people that at least to your closed casinos? And they didn't.
Thank you for that clear explanation. That helped me a lot. I appreciate it.
Thank you, DeeDee. Just, this is an extension, of course, and when the pandemic hit, no one knew what it was. I mean, there was no doubt about it. We all took the shot together. Actually, in the City of North Las Vegas, this, this isn't all about money, it's more about you right now, but it was a million-dollar loss to the city that we, the city manager had to re-figure out, how to redo his budget. I think the amenities, the movies, the banking, the buffets, all the great things, you know, that you actually made happen by working there, a great environment and a great opportunity for residents of North Las Vegas, we miss it. And I will say, I have talked to them about the Durango Station, about our stations opening up, and they've told me that it's on the list to get that one finished and then crank this one back up again. So that, we've had a lot of growth in North Las Vegas. It's time, you know? But I understand you can only take on so many risks until you finish one to start another one. I do believe we'll get one of those casinos back open and applying those amenities to our communities and those jobs that we need so much, and we're on that, okay? But we do, we all took a hit together, but we now want it to come back together, so I appreciate you for that. So I appreciate you. Thank you for coming up and representing your organization.
Thank you.
I didn't know who to call, but you did a good job.
That's okay. No, thank you for listening. I appreciate it very much, so.
Well, thank you so, thank you much. So Counsel, at this time, on Item Number 17, is to grant the extension of this casino so it can start up faster when the time comes. So if there's no other comments or questions, we'll close the public comment. Is there any comments or anything you'd like to say, or somebody like to make a motion on this?
Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 2694 at this time.
Thank you. We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. So you guys can leave when you want now, or you can sit and listen to the rest of a boring meeting now. Thank you very much for your time coming down here today.
Item Number 19, 18, I can't even read the numbers right in there. Item Number 18, Resolution Number 2695, expressing City Council's intent to lease 2,645 square feet of office space located at the sixth floor of the North Las Vegas City Hall to Leadership Institute of Nevada pursuant to NRS 268.064.
Ms. City Manager, do you have some in the audience, or could you just, I have forgotten who we're leasing, is it an educational organization? Give me an update real quick on that one. Or Ms. Sally, would you like to come up?
It wouldn't be Sally, it'd be Jared, but I don't know if Jared has, or, it's, it's an education, it's a nonprofit.
Yeah, that's what I thought then, okay. No, no problem. Sally, if you'd just come next week prepared for every item, we'd appreciate that. Thank you very much. So if there's no other comments or questions, I'll open this up for public hearing. Seeing no one coming forth, the Chair will close the public hearing and take a motion.
Mayor, I'll be happy, I'll be happy to make a motion to approve Number 18, the actual number, Resolution 2695.
Thank you. We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Ordinances introduction only.
Item Number 19, ordinance number 3117, an ordinance related to, did I say too many ones? 3117, an ordinance related to the zoning, reclassifying approximately 6.7 acres of C1 Neighborhood Commercial District to the PUD PID Plan Unit Development, Plan Infill Development District, ZN 05-2022, Craig and Allen Apartments, consisting of 161-unit multifamily apartment complex for property located approximately 540 feet east of the southeast corner of Craig Road and Allen Lane, and providing other matters properly related thereto. Item Number 20, ordinance number 3123, an ordinance amending Title V of the Municipal Code of the City of North Las Vegas related to business licensing generally by amending Section 5.02.001 definitions by deleting and replacing Section 5.02.270 as license fees and short-term rentals and providing for other matters properly related thereto. Item Number, Item Number 21, ordinance number 3124, an ordinance amending Title V of the Municipal Code of the City of North Las Vegas Business License Regulations by repealing and replacing Chapter 5.29 Cannabis Establishments, amending Section 5.42.010, persons required to undergo criminal background investigations for business licensing purposes and providing other matters properly related thereto. These three items, Number 19, Number 20, and Number 21, are set for final action on June 15, 2022. Item Number 22, ordinance number 3126, an ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately 2.08 acres from the RAR2 Redevelopment Area Medium Density Residential Subdivision to RADC Redevelopment Area Development Course Subdistrict, area downtown core, thank you, hooked on phonics didn't work for me, but it's redevelopment area downtown core. The microphone was actually in the way of downtown, I need to put it over to the side. Subdivision ZN-07-2022 for property located at 1941 Jefferson Street, and providing for other matters properly related thereto, set for final action June 15, 2022. Ordinance Number 3127, an ordinance amending Title 17 of the Municipal Code of the City of North Las Vegas, ZOA-02-2022, relating to permitted uses of allowed short-term rentals and providing for other matters properly related thereto, set for final action on June 15, 2022. Ordinance Number 3128, an ordinance amending Title 8 of the Municipal Code of the City of North Las Vegas relating to the issuance of civil penalties for short-term rental violations and the addition of 90-day late fee by amending Section 8.70.020 fee schedule for civil citations and civil penalties, and providing for other matters properly related thereto, set for final action June 15, 2022.
Thank you very much. Interesting items coming towards this, Counsel. Moving on to appointments.
Item Number 25, Mayor Pro Tem for a one-year term ending June 30, 2023.
Thank you. Councilman Churchill.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me first say it's been a privilege serving as Mayor Pro Tem, representing not only my ward, but assisting where needed over the past year. But we pass it on, pass the baton, and it gives me great privilege to recommend my colleague, Pamela Goines Brown, as being the next Mayor Pro Tem here in North Las Vegas. That's my motion.
Thank you. Ms. Goines Brown, would you like to say something? Would you accept that?
I accept that, and I like the system that we have here, that we do pass the baton every year. It gives us each a chance to shine in that role and represent the City whenever the mayor is unable to do that, and it gives me great pleasure and great joy to serve as the Mayor Pro Tem this year, so I accept.
Did you want to sit where you're at as the Mayor Pro Tem?
You know I don't like change. Get here.
I just want to make sure. It's been like.
I'm not moving.
Eight years since you haven't changed your seat, so, all right. Well, we have a motion. Counselwoman Black, did you want to add anything to that?
I would just say how honored I am to work with all of you on the City Council, and I totally respect and appreciate the hard work that Councilwoman Goines Brown does, and I look forward to supporting her for the next year as our Mayor Pro Tem.
And I would like to thank you, Richard, for covering for the mayor at times when I have to go, be places, or like you say, cut ribbons and things like that. You did a fantastic job this year, and I know you'll feel it whenever Ms. Goines can't too, you know what I mean? So we work together on that. So thank you, Richard, for your year of service. So with that, the Councilman Church has given us a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Good choice. Moving on to City Managers' Report.
Counsel, I have nothing to report at this time.
Okay, moving on to Second Public Forum, now's the time for the public to speak on issues that were not on the agenda tonight and that are within the jurisdictions or control of the North Las Vegas City Council. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Remember that no items raised during the Second Public Forum may be deliberated and underacted upon by the City Council. However, the items discussed may be referred to the City Manager or other city staff for action by the City Council later date. Madam City Clerk, do we have any blue cards or written comments at this point in time?
No, Mr. Mayor.
We do not, thank you. So we will close the public forum, and this meeting is adjourned.